So, thanks everybody for being here for our special meeting. It is March 24th and given, this is our regular meeting time, but we created a special meeting to get some district updates during this COVID-19 recess break. And so I'm going to hand it right over to you, Tom, so that you can fill us in with all of the changing developments.
Alright, so probably the best way to do this this evening is for me to just give a brief overview of where we are and then allow Heather, Art, Bill, Gail, Liz, and the building administrators to pitch in as far as giving updates along where we are, specific to their departments. Heather's is brief and we have a lot of time to MOU, so we can kind of talk that through out loud. That's a pretty brief one. We can talk about what's happening in the HR world. Bill's team has been working full-time. They have been, they have been on the clock the whole time, taking advantage of this time actually, especially when there's been teacher visits to make sure as we stagger those visits, they're cleaning and disinfecting. Art has been non-stop between technology and food services, so we want to make sure that we give an update there. Gail is, and quite a army, are doing the Herculean lift of getting a distance online learning program off the ground, which we have a lot to update there. Liz's board became infinitely more complex with specialization and the needs there within this. And then I think it's important for the building administrators, maybe just one or two, to represent and give an idea of, from the ground level, they're working with teachers at the building level, you know, what it is that we're doing and how we're doing it. So, a couple of quick things. I'm not going to repeat all in detail the updates to the board that I gave over the past week or two, but for the community who's watching this, free lunch program is up and running. Art can give an update there. We've had requests to pick up band instruments and pick up things from the schools and we have to really be careful on how we're honoring those and we're doing our best to honor those requests. We do have teacher requests this week to come in to get ready for distance learning and to pick up their materials. They can't just do this on the fly at home. So each building has done a great job coming up with a system that honors all the distance, all the social distance. I think we're distant a lot here. We have communication needs, obviously that are ongoing and we've been addressing those along the way with Zorut.
Sorry, if you are on the line and you're not muted, could you mute your device? There's a little bit of feedback, sorry.
Thank you. Technology access, Art can talk about at length, but making sure that folks have access to devices where they need them. We're really trying to make sure that each house has a usable device for their kids. And we're not a one-to-one district. We can't pretend to be a one-to-one district, we're not. But where we can, we want to make sure that we can support students in their access while they're at home. I do have updates from the commissioner that I want to touch on because it has implications for our calendar. So I want to make sure that when we are talking about the school calendar, we have some guidance from the state level, which I'll go through shortly as well. The state testing program has been suspended. A waiver was submitted and approved pretty quickly. Teacher evaluation as well. And there have been some relaxing of the Connecticut Data Privacy Act. The place maybe to start on the calendar, which I think is important for the board before I hand it off to the other administrators, right now, the governor has stated that we are closed till April 20. That still keeps us in this window of time with expecting it coming back. I think many of us do not anticipate coming back, but we're functioning as if we are coming back at some point now under the governor's latest decree, yeah. So with that, we have to use, we were asked to use, back a week or two ago, seems like a month now, we were asked to use as many school days as we can so that we would end on our normal day of June 18, for Madison's June 18. So that would be the upcoming April vacation. And we would use instructionally, not as vacation. However, I think it's a good idea for the board to come back next week in a virtual meeting like this, a special meeting, to make a formal action, take formal action on the calendar because the 180 days was relaxed and we can maintain, the commissioner has been saying that it's maintained as a local decision still, the calendar, for boards that are concerned. So the administrative team meets again tomorrow, full team. We would like to report the recommendation.
Who's on, who's on that cell phone is not muted?
Yeah, the bottom right guy.
Who's on the cell phone, can you mute your call?
Can you message him, Steve?
I can mute him.
That be the matter?
They're muted.
They just, they just muted, it's the, it's the 0894 number, or whatever, 8492.
I muted him, I think, but I don't think, I'm, Scott, unmute Scott, who else? Okay.
I just unmuted myself and I'm going Mac unmute.
Okay.
And it keeps flashing the entire screen every time you talk, that's the problem.
Alright, moving on.
Okay, so I think what's just important to keep in mind is as of this moment, we are asked to use those April days, as many days as we can, because the governor has only set for April 20. We can come back next week. It's a local decision on the April vacation. We anticipate, which I think we all do, that we'll be out the remainder of the year. We can look at either repurposing April vacation to a different week, possibly a midpoint between March 30th and June 18. We could look at no April break. We could look at a variety of different models. And the administrative team can put together a recommendation for the board to come back next week, so parents can plan for that. But at this point, there's latest state today, not officially, but informally, the governor did say that some of the effect of expecting them back is September. But that's not on record, that was just a conference, which...
So just so I'm clear, at this point and starting Monday when the school starts, students should expect to not have this April vacation that's currently on the calendar?
We're expected to use those days right now to start a program for our best effort and to use as many school days as possible in order to end on June 18.
Okay.
If the school year, however, the commissioner did say that April break is a local decision still. So if we want to revisit it and see a natural break somewhere halfway between March 30th and June 18th, might not be a bad idea for us to consider that.
Okay.
So the admin team is going to meet tomorrow and we're going to put together some recommendations and perhaps a special meeting next week, just like this, with that as an action item, a calendar adjustment action item, may be good for us to do next week.
So Wendy will connect and figure out how to get that on the calendar. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm not going to go in-depth on anything else. I'm going to pass it off to the team to discuss some other areas. I just want to make one statement about the distance learning program. I think it's really important that we have identified five primary principles, PLE principles. And Gail will go in great detail about this later on and give some samples. We have overarching instructional and programmatic priorities, number one. We have the principle of keeping our classes connected the best way we can. We have lost connection and that is what is probably one of the greatest tragedies of all this for kids. They want to belong to something.
And teachers.
And teachers, absolutely. Number three, we are identifying ways to meet individual student needs in a distance learning program. Number four, we're developing methods to monitor student progress and to introduce new tools and materials incrementally as we continue to ramp up week after week. And number five, we are developing ways to be accessible and responsive to student and parent questions, which is quite time-consuming. You know, right now, when you look at a simple email or question could take up a lot of time and you're multiplying that by 20 parents or if you teach four classes, maybe eight parents. It's, you know, so trying to manage that. So this week is dedicated to coming up with all the systems. I think the staff is incredibly energized, but very, very anxious right now. And rightfully so. There's no reason anybody in a normal position like this would be. This is a very difficult lift and they want to be supported and expectation for certain components. And they had another idea and we've gone back and forth to try to make it work, so it's successful from day one. But the overall principle of starting and moving gradually, so starting small and successful and layering on every week. Week one will probably not look the same as week nine. We'll be, you know, more adept at the tools, at the process, and we anticipate that'll grow over time also. So that's it for opening comments. I think if, Heather, if we could just give just a very brief overview on the MOU work that you have done and we've accomplished so far.
Yeah, you can sit here.
So very briefly, my work is not anywhere in line with what we're doing with curriculum and teachers, but we unfortunately have to deal with all of the ins and outs of collective bargaining. So Tom and I have been working with the various unions, specifically with the teachers' union. We got a memorandum of agreement to allow the online or distance potential development for this week along with an understanding to do the online distance learning remotely for teachers. You know, that's not an easy task when teachers are used to working in the classroom, have the kind of calendar of workdays is ever-evolving and flowing as situations change, i.e. possible cancellation of April break and the school ending date. For the MACE union, we've also put into place for all the 12-month employees from MACE, along with all of the 12-month employees, social distancing at work and/or remote working from home. For the 10-month support staff, we have put in place a guarantee of pay continuation for the end of the school year. And I think that will be ever-evolving, the role that the parents will play as we continue to roll out the distance learning. I think the focus right now is on teachers and then we can extend that to our support staff. We are still in the process of working with the cafeteria group and more information is to come on that. And then from the HR end, we've been trying to do things like reaching out to the staff to let them know about live health online, so if they don't want to leave the house and see a doctor, they have that information at home. That can cover their, you know, personal appointments that they had not related to COVID, along with COVID information. And then we've started to initiate an at-home wellness program because we all know how stressful these times are for everyone. So we're hoping to dial in to some people and give them some things they can do at home to kind of help their mental and physical health.
And obviously the AMA, the administrators are probably working more hours now than they do at any point in their careers. It's around the clock. And Billy's team, the Teamsters, is looking at a normal schedule, although you can speak to that shortly. We've adjusted it, but they're still very active in the buildings right now and fully engaged in their jobs. Questions for Heather?
Yes, so Heather, with respect to the collective bargaining issues, the, what Tom was referring to earlier, the use of the April 6th, April 6th break, that if we need to use that for our school days, where the teachers are in agreement with that?
Yes, they are given so many days per year. Teachers, for instance, have 188 working days. So as long as we stay within that 188 working day window, we are fine.
Okay, so if we have to do away with the April break, we're okay?
Because if we had so many snow days, we start taking from April break as well.
Right, and we add it up at the end.
Do not talk about snow days, do not jinx this.
Yesterday might have been a snow day.
And then the other thing, so to what extent are subs affected by this?
Subs will be affected, that's one of the things, is we are going to be reaching out to our substitutes because obviously we can't physically bring substitutes in to do online distance learning. So we do want to stay engaged with them and let them know that, you know, the situation is unique, but obviously we want to be retaining them for when we do come back to physically be in classrooms.
So are they being compensated then?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we sent notification, I sent notification to the teachers today to let them know that I was introducing the idea of the April vacation being contiguous instructional time now, yet to be determined what that might look like. I think with the governor not making a definitive statement on whether or not school will be canceled the rest of the year and extending it only to April 20, it keeps us in a little bit of a holding pattern, but the commissioner has been abundantly clear in every conference call. He has been outstanding in saying it's a local decision. So we can look at all three and those 188 days is the magic number. Okay, alright, great. Thank you, Heather. Does, you've been doing some, some great work there in the free lunch program? And then maybe transition over to technology?
Sure, well, last Wednesday, we began distributing lunches to anybody that showed up, actually. We publicized, we have, we have information on our website and as well as on the town website about lunch availability. We did a mobile calling, email campaign to families that we know might be in need. And we haven't, not had a great number of takers on it, but I think that we've had about 15 a day. We've got it set up under the bridge at Daniel Handpay School so that they can just drive up, not have to get out of their car. They put in a bag with their choice, these three different choice wraps. Also, we're going to be able to kind of...
Art, you've got it, or...
Art, we're losing you.
Your volume is going down.
How are we doing now?
A little better.
Not much, speak up. Are you far away from your mic?
I can speak a whole lot louder than this, let's see.
I think you're far away from your mic.
That'd be better.
There you go.
Oh, alright, maybe I was covering the microphone by accident. In any event, what I was saying is that we don't have a lot of takers on the lunch. About 15 and we hope to see a little bit of that pick up as the word gets out. We've done some advertising through direct mobile call to families that we know are meeting. Also reached out to our social services folks, Scott Cochran. Get the word out as best we can on that. As I said, the lunch contains a choice of three different wraps. There's a vegetarian choice. Every meal includes with the wrap, a piece of fruit, a cookie and a drink. And the opportunity also for a breakfast for the next morning, which is also distributed at that time. And we'll give them as many, as many meals as they say they have children or children in need. So we also had the health department come out. We had a representative from the health department. She came out and gave us a little extra guidance on the smartest, best way to keep our workers safe, people in cars safe, and have a nice helping transfer in that regard. So we're pretty, pretty confident that we're offering a decent product with some, you'd say, regards in mind. As far as advertising, you know, there is a crossover here, believe it or not, in the tech, the land share of the distributive work of polling their respective school communities for who might need a device at home and who may or may not have internet access. And we had printed up a document that had, to be included in the lunch distribution as well for the first few days of that, that includes information about what Comcast is doing, what Frontier is doing. And we're asking families to reach out first on their own to where we know there's some opportunity for them to help themselves with access to some free services through the utilities. After that happens, if we, if we don't have, if they have no way of getting access, we are prepared with a small number of hotspots that are on order, shipping any moment, all of the appropriate paperwork and purchasing and things has been done. And I don't think that it will be very long before they're in place, but there are, we don't have very many on order and the need. We have probably twice as many as we understand there to be some need at the moment for people who've been identified, for families who've been identified. So hopefully that will be something that, you know, we'll meet that need if families can't do that on their own. Shall I move right into the rest of the technology discussion?
Yes, please.
So basically, I have to, have to really say how proud I am of the staff that I've got, the tech department and as well as the bootshoes. I'm working with a bunch of very hard-working, creative, smart people and they're coming up with great solutions to offer things that are all reasonably new to us. If you look at us, of course, both the town and schools, they've never really considered very much about the town having to go totally remote to deliver all their services. That's a very much in-person kind of operation. Not to, not to say that school districts aren't in classroom teaching, of course, is also a large plan there. But we've had some very good, good work going on. As far as communicating information to the, to the school community and the general town public, you know, we've got, Rita had done a tremendous amount of work on the websites and she's been working with Gail and her staff and the principals to get as much information out as possible. She's created COVID-19 pages on both town and school websites and she's working on a tremendous number of different communications all the time. She's also, I'm sure, Gail, I don't want to, I don't want to take any of Gail's thunder balls, she's been working closely with Gail on setting up the distance learning for the near people and certainly all of the current learning opportunities that are out there in the meantime. So she's been working with Gail and she's been working with a number of teachers, Mike Kiefer and Don Fiorelli come to mind. I'm sure there's plenty of other folks contributing, but a lot of work's being done in that regard. You may be interested in an EDC survey that was done for local businesses. The results of that are also posted online, put out something through our social media postings, seeking some supplies. And we were very happy to see that it was shared 71 times and reached 5,800 people. So obviously the power of social media is certainly very, very present. Let's see, you know, the other kinds of solutions that have been, that we've been coming up with for communications, I know that Pulse and administration have asked for some mechanisms to be able to reach out by email to students or parents of sixth, seventh and eighth grades. So groups of those classes have been created. We've done a whole lot of work to try and streamline communications back and forth. Essential town employees and school district employees have been issued the equipment that they need, temporary laptops for town, some town employees, devices that perform dual authentication for extra security when connecting to our internal network remotely. You know, we're keeping critical functions such as payroll accounts payable, tax collection, and I hate to say critical, but this munis conversion's on such a tight deadline that we're also keeping after that as well. That's the conversion of the financial system, which we have a strong deadline on from July 1. We do have additional devices on order, although, you know, critical personnel and law departments do have access. The school employees, all certified staff and administrators have school-issued laptops. You'll know that I was a strong supporter of putting out laptops for teachers for already one through the five-year cycle and a couple of different grade levels already. So we've been doing this for the last five, six, seven years now. Teachers all have their own laptops that they normally work on on a docking station in the classroom, but they've been able to take those home and all have access to Zoom meetings for collaboration and, you know, working, I think they'll be working under the Google platform, but collaboration with their own, regular work with their teams. Access to email, every employee has access to email by a couple of different methods. Certainly they can do it through a desktop web browser. They can also use their smartphones. Staff can, we've come up with some creative, some technology departments. School do something that our facilities department started using a long time ago. They have a very effective product for tech as well. We've been using it for several years now. So teachers are certainly comfortable with submitting school requests. All they need is access to the internet to do that. It's a cloud-based solution. In addition to that, we purchased a clinical login rescue that many of you have used something like it when you're dealing with, you know, having some trouble with the cable company and somebody wants to connect to your computer. It's all internet-based and this way we don't have to be on our internal network to be able to offer some of our employees technical support. It's not, we can't do absolutely everything remotely, but that is something that is going to help us in this situation specifically. And I'm sure we'll keep it for, for years to come after this, this whole situation subsides a little bit. Students, you know that our students currently in grades nine and 10 at the high school already have Chromebooks and one-to-one device program. So we've been using, the principals have put the word out, asking for folks that have no access to a device at home that would need a device, so that would be just a module for the Destiny library system that we use in the schools. There's a resource manager that got purchased quickly and implemented in all of the schools that allows us to track the devices, like a library book kind of thing, you catalog them and then you can check them out to the student population or for that matter to the teachers. So we've been doing that at the high school for a couple of years now, keeping track of laptops, the teachers and the Chromebooks for the two grade levels that have them, one-to-one. And now we've got that product available in all the schools. So that's something that we implemented relatively quickly.
Art, if I may add to that too, I know the demand on the student side is, you know, is pretty strong and we've been working under the operating principle that one device per household, because we're not a one-to-one district. So they'll miss a live session, it's recorded. And Gail talked about, you can watch it later on. You wouldn't have missed something in the moment that, you know, you can't come back and catch on to. But trying to encourage parents that a device per household should be sufficient. Most households have it, but they, you know, they definitely have parents all working right now.
Yes.
So they're using their home devices. So the demand for devices is a lot higher than we originally anticipated just for that reason. Moms and dads are homeworking. So we've been responding. I know, you know, Becky and Kelly at elementary level especially have been working within the system to reallocate Chromebooks so kids can get them. Parents, we have a system where they can pick them up and we have the distancing in place and that's been working. The demand that we, what we had asked first in, in the free lunch program, we put some mixes in there, in their lunches if they need it. Art, have we had many requests? I know we just had a couple, correct, for the wireless at home, the hotspots?
As far as I know, we've had about three requests so far. But that doesn't mean that there won't be more. It might be four at this point in time. But again, we're hoping that by providing information about some offerings of Comcast and Frontier and there's probably other, you know, Verizon's probably got some, all of the mobile carriers probably have other ideas as well. You'll see that there's, you know, they're advertising that they have free access to all of their hotspots. That sounds a little bit better initially than it is for a kid in their house. That's a public, you know, public hotspot that they're able to log into without credentials. So that's not quite as useful, but they do have quite a few generous programs going on now. Hoping that people can be a little self-sufficient and track that down. But we've got some, we've got at least three requests I know of, possibly a fourth, but we are always listening to that. I am having some trouble hearing the folks in the room and I don't think it's my equipment at this point. If it's possible, speak up just a little bit.
Kirk, Art.
I just mentioned to Kirk, Art, that...
Very less bit.
Art, are we building up an inventory of hotspots?
We are lucky, we'll be lucky to get the ones we've ordered at this moment, but, you know, we don't, we have probably ten on order.
Okay, and then Art, have we provided some type of instructional material to help them work through the issues with either a Comcast or a Frontier or a Verizon service?
We provided the contact information for those companies and the blurb from the company's own literature as far as what, what programs they're offering.
Hi.
Thanks, Art.
I have a couple of questions for you, Art. The main platforms that we're using are Google Classroom and Infinite Campus? Is that what you said?
If I heard the question correctly, you're asking what are the main platforms that we're using?
Yeah.
You know, the students, you know, Gail can speak to it probably more succinctly. As far as I know, they're going to consistently use the Google G suite of products, but that includes Google Meet, which is kind of similar to Zoom. And that's something that will be within our Google G suite for education, the platform that they're all in and using right now. And it's a combination of Google Classroom and the Google Meet for the face-to-face kind of interactions for teachers and students. As far as teachers being able to collaborate with one another, the professional version of Zoom, which has very, many fewer restrictions. Even though the K-12 community has been given access to the free version with some of the restrictions removed, we've applied for that K-12 status as well. You have to actually fill out a form online and apply for it. We did that right away and... and we're still waiting to hear whether that has been processed.
So my main.
I'm not sure that whoever here, it may just have been processed, and it will work. Certainly be able to work right out and be game with it. The only restriction is that there is a limited amount of getting worked.
Art, Katie has another question.
So my question, the reason why I ask that is because if people have, are using their own Chromebooks at home, their own personal Chromebooks, if students are using those, are there any security scans or things that students should be aware of or parents should be aware of? I know that this district-issue Chromebooks, you know, are all set up by our district to maintain privacy and also block certain things, but is there anything that parents should be aware of on that front?
If they're using their own device logged into our MadisonPS.org domain, which is where they would have to be logged into, they will be subjected to our filtering system, which is an Internet-based filter. So now, you know, that makes you as protected as if you were working on one of our devices, even if you were in buildings.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to hear.
So that's about as good as we'll be able to do. I did have, I wanted to make note that everybody needs to be extra cautious about cybersecurity concerns now. There's always some very bad people around waiting to take advantage of sites like these, and there's, you know, an uptick in all kinds of malicious spam, and you have to be very careful, you know, professionally, personally, and that goes for anybody using email.
Well, likewise.
Email, it goes for anybody. The email accounts that our students are issued through the district, those are restricted and can only send to email addresses that are within the MadisonPS.org domain or within the Madison.K12.CT.us domain. So it's restricted. They can't go outside and just send an email to anybody.
Great.
Or receive anything from anybody but other than those two domains. So teachers can communicate back with students, and students can communicate with teachers.
Art, Katie has two more questions. Hold tight right there.
Bear with me. In terms of technology issues, if parents, particularly, I'm thinking of parents of younger students, I think our, even intermediate-grade students and older are pretty familiar with Chromebooks, but in elementary schools, if parents are having issues with the technology on how to log on or how to access the schoolwork, who would they call or get in touch with? And will there, and this is for Tom, will there be hard copy assignments available for parents that would prefer that?
Gail has done the hard copy. Why don't you talk about that?
Okay.
They didn't set up outside the schools. And as far as the parents' tech support.
I can actually also address the log-on question, if parents are having log-on issues.
Okay, great.
Hold on one second, Gail. So we have a parent communication that'll be going out tomorrow, some incremental information tomorrow, Thursday, Friday. I'm a little concerned with just inundating them with too much information tomorrow, so we're going to try to just do a little at a time, but between now and Monday on the launch, there will be information to support them. And I know that our tech coaches also want to put some videos up on our website that are just very self-tutorials, self-explanatory kinds of things to support parents.
Awesome.
Go ahead, Gail.
Yeah, I can cover that, some of that in my presentation as well, Katie. I'll give you some visuals on a screen share if I can.
Thanks, Phil.
That'd be great. We'll wait for that. You'll work on.
And then my last question for Art is, on your third hand and your job is busing, can you just touch on that, or has that not been addressed yet?
Can you repeat that, Katie? I'm sorry.
Sure. Transportation.
Yes. Transportation is at a standstill. Nothing's going on with transportation right now.
Okay.
So that's a good question because.
Employees of the transportation company are employees of their school services.
All right, I have feedback from the commissioner, if you could just hold on there. The commissioner has noted to all the superintendents at this time, the transportation bills are dependent upon a specific contract that was agreed to by each individual district. So they're looking for us to negotiate and work with our local vendors, which Art has been in contact with. However, he cautions us that there may be a ruling in an upcoming executive order, so just kind of sit tight for a little bit. These executive orders are coming. This is what it means, as I interpret it, so, but that's in there. That's good.
And I'd like, I have one more question. All of the documents that you talked about, Art, that have been up on the website, is it possible, and this might be a question for Rita for another day, to archive them all under this COVID-19?
Especially if you have one website.
Awesome. I think that's great, just with tips for parents and where to find stuff. It's all on one.
Yep, we're going to do one repository.
Great.
I have a series of questions on the webpages as well, so we've been building archives as we go with that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Art, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Two quick questions, and thanks for all this information. It's really helpful. One is, I'm aware that there are some households that are still seeking Chromebooks. Has there been any discussion to order more Chromebooks? I might have missed it. I was quiet on the call earlier, but I was curious about whether or not it's possible to do that within the budget, or whether the board should be thinking about a transfer if that becomes a pressing issue?
No, I can, Art, I can start the answer. You can finish. We have Chromebooks in the district. Still, we have to reallocate. We ask parents to contact the building principal and come up with a system. So I think the building principals probably can get a pretty direct answer as far as what their back orders are. I know we fulfilled a lot today. Becky, are you on the line? Can you hear us?
I sure am.
Becky, what's the status of the Chromebooks? I know you and Kelly probably were two that needed to fulfill Chromebook orders. Are you in good shape?
Well, no, we have a waitlist at Jeffrey, to be quite honest. So we have 100 Chromebooks, we have 100 Chromebooks in the building. I have scanned at all of those that might have a waitlist of more families that are still looking for a device. So I worked with Frank today. They know there are extra Chromebooks within, and I told all the parents in the building that I would be in touch with by the end of the week.
Well, the process is definitely that the principals are collecting the information about who needs the devices. They are submitting that information to my department through our network manager, Cassie Morrison, and I generally get the CC on that. In the system, we should have sufficient Chromebooks to meet all of those needs. I do think, though, that, you know, the one-per-household rule is going to make it so that it's very possible to fulfill the needs with the inventory of the equipment that we currently have, break. And I think that, you know, we should be able to do a little better than that as well. There are many additional Chromebooks available in carts right now at the high school at Paulson. Initial thought, I mean, the initial thought was grades three and up, or grades four and up, including grade three after immediate change, and now I understand it's K through.
Art, if I can jump in, at the, at Rerson, we are distributing at this point 40 Chromebooks. Right now, we're in good shape. We are very responsive to the parents. We provide a large window for our windows to bring up the Chromebooks. So right now, we are in very good shape to provide the support that parents need for online art.
And now we have some coming this week. We can fulfill all those just by reallocating within the district, correct?
Correct. In fact, we do want them to be essentially allocated through the tech department to the building, and then, again, picking up with the great help we've been getting from the principals with the distribution at the curb site. The reason being that if a Chromebook is currently assigned to one building, you can't pick it up to a student that doesn't go to that school. We'll be able to move the inventory, you know, in our library system so that we don't lose track of any of it. That's all we're concerned about, is not losing any of them.
Frank, Frank, any feedback on Chromebooks from Brown?
Of course, I'm hoarding all of them in the district. We're price gouging Chromebooks, and I got Frost. I'm really worried out there. Now, we've been, we had a real big push, you know, obviously, Monday and Tuesday, just been really responsive to parents, where, you know, Mark Winkle, like Kelly was saying, parents are picking them up, very appreciative. You know, haven't really dove in too much into like, well, if you have it in your home, you know, we're not investigators, you know, we're trying to support families. I'm in pretty good shape, and as I told Becky, at the end of the week, we're going to kind of do our inventory and do Art's office if I can. I feel like I'm in pretty good shape. I can hopefully support Becky and Rerson's Chromebooks from Brown. I'm pretty good shape.
Don't forget me.
I thought you were loading up there on the Hill there, Rerson.
Take my day, my friend.
All right, well, you're, certainly, not really for both of them. We've given out about 50 so far. I think I counted, you know, we got about 80 sitting around till the end of the week or so over here.
Thanks, everybody. That's helpful, and I think it would be helpful as well to keep hearing updates about this in particular, and also to track whether there are any households who have requested, that have requested more than one. Obviously, it's easier to share a Chromebook in a household with two than it is with three or four or more units. So just keeping that in mind would be helpful, keep hearing that. The other question I had is really quick. For folks that might have a food insecurity issue but aren't able to get out to the high school, again, I might have missed this while it was quiet, has there been any way to assess whether there's anybody out there like that? Has there been any reach out to families to say, you know, we're excited, here's the number of meals that we've served, we're out here and available. If you can't get there, please let us know?
Well, a great deal of outreach has not been done in that regard. It's not an easy thing to ascertain that, you could blanket that out and hope for responses. And that, again, we've been doing this only since last Wednesday. We haven't been distributing for a full week, but well, just today, thanks to, it must be Friday, distributed to all the building. So it's really been five days of distribution so far. So I think that there's more work to be done with regards to getting that word out, and that's something that we'll sort of work this through shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Art. Bill, you still with us? You're up, looking at the clock.
So first, as Tom said, our facilities guys and ladies, one lady, are working 24/7 if we need to. You know, we're seven days a week. Great crew. You know, I've been in contact with all of them. They're doing a great job. They're taking care of, they're cleaning and maintaining the schools and the town buildings. So I don't see any change in that. We're, of course, cleaning the high-traffic areas when the schools were in session. We continue to do that when we do get visitors. We're going to do deep cleaning with every classroom and along with all the town buildings as well. We're going to continue to maintain the buildings. We do have maintenance people working. We are moving forward with some of our maintenance projects that we were probably going to wait for this summer, but we're going to continue to work and take care of the buildings so when the schools are back in session, whenever that happens, we'll be ready to go, and the schools will be ready, up and running. Of course, we're working with the Board of Selectmen and the Emergency Management Department to make emergency plans. We have assisted in some operations and some equipment needs and supplies. We did order things such as hand sanitizers and wipes for the schools when we had the students in. Of course, we couldn't get those, we couldn't get that supplies, but we do have plenty of cleaning and disinfectant supplies for the schools and the building, for our use. So that is not a concern. We are even assisting one of the town facilities that we don't take care of that needed some cleaning supplies. We're assisting with that. Basically, we're here, we're working, we're taking care of the buildings. You know, my first and most important priority is the employees, and they're doing well. I don't think we have any issues. We had a few people out sick. One is out, you know, longer, but we don't have any issues and concerns about our number of people, and we are taking care of ourselves. The most important thing, too, is that we're trained in cleaning and taking care of the buildings. You know, this is a serious issue, but we protect ourselves for things that are even more dangerous to your health. So it's not new to us to wear the personal protective equipment and take care of and clean the buildings, so we're used to that. We're trained every year on that, and we are doing what we need to do to take care of the buildings. At this point, I'll take questions.
Any questions for Bill?
Yes.
The school fields are not being used. You know, we're taking care of them, of course. We just hired our contractor. We put out to bid the work for the fields. The town is not working, but the grass isn't really growing, and I have a contractor set up to do all we need to do. I actually did some work at the baseball field. Because I had it lined up, I wasn't going to tell a guy to go away, so I know that the town was working on the fields, and I think they're ready.
If and when.
If and when, I think we'll be back in, we'll speed.
Great.
Other questions for Bill? Thanks, Gail.
Thank you, Bill.
You're welcome. So I'm going to have Gail, if you can plug in. As I said earlier, we have looked at five, five different principles. Number one is our overarching priorities for distance learning, having clear learning objectives, clarity of instruction, responding to student confusion, misunderstanding, giving feedback, collecting evidence. Those are our priorities instructionally, number one. Number two, keeping our classes connected, finding ways to use the tools to do that. Number three, breaking down your class into individual student needs and meeting those needs through other opportunities through the tools, maybe some small group and one-on-one through the tools, monitoring student progress, and then finally, being accessible, responsive to student and parent questions. Those are the five. I made a comment to teachers yesterday that I think the teachers are living every single 21st century capacity we could have thought of. They're living in real time right now. So there's a lot of anxiety out there that we're trying to work through. Understandably, they want to do this perfectly. They want to do it well. It's not going to be perfect. It's not going to replicate the regular school day, but we do feel that if we start small and layer on every week, we can do some real good work with kids. So, Gail, you there?
I sure am. Yeah, thank you. I'm actually at central office, but I'm in a connecting room because my desktop is a little bit more effective in sharing screens. I'm hoping that I'll be able to put up some good illustrations of the work that's being done in the district. But before I begin, I really want to thank Art's department, Bill's department. I want to thank Mike Ginsberg, Mike Kiefer, of really showing their dedication and putting extraordinary efforts together to make things come together at a very quick timeframe. So I do want to acknowledge them before I start sharing the work. In addition, I'm hoping the board received an email from Tom a little while ago that had an attachment document summarizing some of the points that I'm going to be able to make tonight. That will probably share a little bit more information than what I'll share in this verbal presentation, but it's a good summary for your reference. So our, the changing landscape has been incredible. I think a couple of weeks ago, we were thinking that there was a high degree of likelihood that we would be reconvening school within a few weeks, and we were really looking to do work of curriculum compacting. And we were working with the Learn regional efforts in order to put up some of the launching of the optimal, the optional learning activities that are currently on the website. In addition to that, our staff worked a great deal on making sure that there were enough options for parents at home if they chose to engage kids in some sort of learning activity during this timeframe. So I hope they've been helpful. I have received a couple here in emails, and I really want to thank them. I appreciate that outreach. So I wanted to share with you just where we are today and some of the highlights of the design. So I'm going to do a little share screen here, or sheet screen share. There you go. Hopefully, you can see that. This is a template that we are using across the district, all content areas, all grade levels. And I'm going to show you a few examples of how this lives and what it looks like. But the idea is that every single course is looking to the adopted board curriculum and making modifications in that curriculum in order to pull up targeted goals consistent with the unit that they designed and the board adopted. So the template looks like this, where there's a task description every day of the week. So the template looks like this where there's a, a task description every day of the week. There's resources and materials and there's some sort of daily checks. Um, Katie referenced, uh, Google Classroom and that is the primary, um, the primary method that students will be doing returns and exchanges with their teachers. So along with this design template, something that's really important to us is that we're clear about the criteria for success for the week. And we want students to know what they need to do and accomplish in order to be successful. And we also want to make sure that we're offering supportive resources and tutorials as well as ongoing check-ins in the event that students are confused or need additional materials or a different way to look at content. So again, this is a very consistent piece across the district that was, um, launched through all of the coordinators, team leaders and coaches. And this is the design that teachers are currently work, working in. Uh, we call this template a module. So, uh, online learning lingo, I've learned a lot about it. They're called modules. Um, we're approximately one week in every module. The design priorities is that there are clear learning goals. There's clarity of instruction that we're responding to kids who are confused. We're offering criteria for success, feedback along the way, and also a collection of evidence. And we also want to maintain our connection with students. Did a fair amount of research on online learning and distance learning time. Very difficult to ascertain how much time on computer screens is appropriate for various grade levels. So I really looked to a lot of private schools, um, a lot of, uh, schools that had done this by design and came up with some guidelines. Really looking at the idea that students will be conducting some work online on computer and also some work offline off computer. So the guidelines that we have given our teachers is that the engagement for online on computer for pre-K through five would be no more than one hour a day, broken up into smaller sections. For six through eight, the guideline is two to three hours per day. And for nine through 12, it's three to four hours per day. I, I think that the modules themselves are also designed with flexibility built in. And that's been a, a very important target for us. Uh, we recognize that kids are going to be, um, ill. Parents might be ill, teachers might be ill. And these modules need to be designed with the idea that I can prioritize some content areas to get done earlier in the week and other content areas that will be accomplished by the end of the week. We also want to make sure that if students miss a week of instruction or have varying access to computers, that there's still an equity, um, by design in this module. Um, I'm going to move on a little bit more into that idea of equity. And I want to share with you, uh, just a little bit of what that looks like. So these modules will be posted up on the website. And, um, it will look something like this. Rita has been working away trying to give us some, um, templates to work off of. So you can see how that looks. And Katie, I think you asked about whether or not parents could seek help. There's this nice box here saying Google Classroom Help.
I noticed that right away and thank you.
I'm sorry?
I noticed that right away. Because I'll be that, I will be that parent.
Uh, so, you know, it gives you a nice little instructional menu for login information. And then also there's a nice link down here if you need codes or passwords. You know, who do I contact? And there's a nice button that's put into that spot as well. Um, again, this is not live yet. This is being built. So the, the reason why this posting is happening is that I'm, um, very aware that some kids and some, uh, families will be very adept at going into Google Classroom and it won't be difficult for them at all. But some people might have missed the message. Um, some people might be going, where is that curriculum? Where is the check-in? Uh, what should I do? So we really wanted to create, um, more of a stagnant area here where I can have access to a module. And I'll show you one that we're working on. But here's an Algebra I Level Two module. And you'll see that it's filled out with the knowledge vocabulary and skills from Unit F, which is right where they left off in Trimester Three, Beyond Straight Lines. If I click on this, it's a link that goes directly to the Stage One on the website. So I can get all the detail on that entire unit if I wanted to. But it also, if I just stay within the module, gives a variety of resources, the expectations, the daily checks, the links to videos. But all of this is not live on the public site. So if a parent hit on these links, they would not be live and they would be directed to go back into that request for access. However, if I was a parent who was transitioning, I would still have an awareness that there are weekly expectations. So this is just kind of a backup design. So we will have, um, a degree of comfort that parents will, um, know that now we are online and that there are expectations. But there's also familiarity within, um, Google that it all looks the same. So I'll hit, uh, Grade Five BLA. Here's another module. And again, it links back to the document. And this is an overview, again, of everything that's happening. So I'm going to go out of this a little bit. I can give you a couple other examples if you would like to see them. Um, but if you would like me to continue, I can do that.
Gail, can you just show one of the, um, early childhood sites just to see what those?
I'm sorry, Katie, what?
One of the early childhood sites, okay, one or two.
Um, so kindergarten, I'll, I'll give you an idea of Spanish. We had a lot of discussion around some of the related arts of whether or not it better to give like a one-day-a-week-related art thing or to give a little, um, little dribble along the week. And we ended up with a dribble along the week, but we have a lot of communication to do about the expectations on that. So here is our kindergarten Spanish. And this links, um, in the real site to, um, Sesame Street, to the Olaf Song. Um, you're going to hear a lot of singing and, uh, a lot of, um, greetings around your house if you were a kindergarten parent. So you'll see that it's really meant to be very playful. Um, there's a movement break day. Uh, there's like a little performance piece to your family. And there's the ability to, um, read to your favorite stuffed animal. So that's more of, um, one in a lifetime.
That's great. Thank you.
Sure.
Again, hold on one second. I think what's important to keep in mind is we have, um, parents who are home and they're going to be as much guidance as possible. They're going to have secondary students who probably could be fairly independent. But we're also going to have, you know, half of our population is at the elementary and intermediate level that might not be able to be so independent. And mom and dad, because they're home, doesn't mean that they're teaching. They're most likely working from home. So we need to come up with a? Yeah, exactly. We came up with a system that we think will kind of meet in the middle on that and provide that asynchronous, uh, system where they can access it. You saw Gail went through all the different resources there. So, uh, this is all pulled together in the past couple of weeks. It's been great work.
Um, so another piece that I think Tom mentioned about the modules is that any live sessions that occur, um, would also be taped. So students can still have access to those lessons whatever time of day that they are able to log on. Um, I am very aware that, that parents are sharing computers. They're all working out of the house themselves. Um, there could be several kids in one house and they might very well have to prioritize which live session, um, kids are able to see or whether or not there are other activities or other things that they're doing take, uh, priority. You know, there, there might be times where two classes might have a live session at those details. In the beginning, you know, I would say, uh, a few days ago, um, and I want to thank Bill for this. Uh, Bill and his guys, um, ordered some wonderful bins that are outside of every building so parents could pull up in their cars. And the concept was you could pull up and pick up a paper packet or some materials and then you could also drop off at another bin. Uh, based on the changing, um, information that we're continually getting, I don't know how many people would be accessing those. But the thought was there that, um, we would provide that kind of service and we would be able to cover yet another way that we could distribute modules to families. You know, we're, we're certainly able to pull that in whenever it's appropriate because some, the bins are there and they have been used for other purposes. So I want to thank Bill and the guys for that. We're also looking at our English learners. Um, they're being contacted individually and we are providing translation services for access where needed. Um, and I know Liz is going to talk more about special ed and language, um, English. I'm sorry, special ed and intervention teachers in pre-K. But I wanted to give you an idea of what is going on in the district as well in terms of teacher learning. So Mike Ginsberg has put together and Mike Kiefer, this is a Google Classroom. This is what it looks like. And you see that there is a stream of conversation going. We also have a very healthy Q and A sheet, sheet around very common, uh, questions. But in this, I'm going to give you an idea of what the classwork looks like for our teachers right now. So our teachers are not only building those modules, they're learning all of these tutorials of how to operate in a design that is a Google Classroom. So these are all mini modules. And in addition to that, Mike Kiefer and Mike Ginsberg are wa, offering live classes. Uh, one was, uh, two o'clock today, uh, going into how to set up things. So people are learning a lot.
Can I ask a question?
And they're, and they're really going through a ton of information.
Gail, so just, I know when you were saying that they're building the modules, that it's the curriculum that's already been approved by the board, but it's transitioning it to digital format.
Compacting.
It is, and it's also selecting from the curriculum what's most important to teach because you're still curriculum compacting. You can't have kids on, online, um, doing exactly what they would be doing in a face-to-face, um, setting. So it's, um, it's, it's both. They have to really prioritize. And I think I met with the board, um, the last time we met. I shared with you that they were going through their trimester three, um, units and they were highlighting things that would translate easily into a distance learning platform. And then they were highlighting things that would not. So they're really kind of painfully going through those and deciding, um, what they can create. Uh, they're, they're taping themselves. They're looking for different resources, uh, because it might be a textbook that was shared or a material that was shared that is no longer, um, going to be used. So this, I wanted to share with you, this is what it looks like in a class. And this is a mock-up of a class. This is actually my STEAM class. So what you would see, and I'm a student in this class, is what is up and coming. I would also be able to click here and I would see all of my classwork that is assigned to me for each week in the exit slip. Um, I'd also be able to see in my calendar, my Google Calendar, what my assignments are. Oops, hold on. I think I've got the wrong calendar. That is St. Patrick's Day. Here we go. So I'm able to see when Mr. Ginsberg has office hours and when my active classes are in Google Calendar. Oops. And I'm also able to go into my classroom streaming. I can have conversations with my classmates. The first thing that people will see when they go into their classroom is the overview of the week. Uh, sorry, that didn't translate right. Um, that I shared with you of how to get into the calendar. Oh, there it is. There's a class meeting video that I would participate in. And here's that overview that I shared with you that's on the website. So if I'm a student and want to see the layout of the week all at once, I can see the same template no matter what class I'm in. So every single class I'm in,
That's critical.
I can click on these resources. I can click on these modules. I can click on the daily checks. But in addition to that, I've got this scrolling design for, um, for Mr. Ginsberg's class.
Gail, the uniform?
I'm actually able to join the meeting.
Gail, the uniformity of the template and the layout is probably one of the best, um, design features for parents that the team came up with. Because they're seeing the same, every class, they know where to look for over the course of the week, where the resources are, what the learning outcomes are. As a parent trying to manage it, it's going to be difficult.
Yeah.
Um, that is probably one of the best design features they came up with. Yeah.
So we're, again, trying to make it accessible and, um, you know, similar no matter how many grades I'm looking at or how many kids I'm looking at. So just in terms of delivery, K through two, um, does not have active Google Classroom passwords right now. We're going to reset them all. We're going to communicate to parents directly what their login information would be. Um, I think you saw the, the help button. The only exception to using Google Classroom would be for those classrooms at the high school level that are already using Final Site as a primary, um, tool. And those classrooms would be the ones that are, uh, full-year classes or ones that ran T2 and now running T3. So we're trying to keep a consistent platform for kids who are at the high school level. And I would say primarily those are the science courses at the high school. I also wanted to go into a, a piece on parent communication. We're equally concerned about the amount of stress and changes going on, uh, for our students and for our families. And, uh, we are designing in that, um, instead of that social emotional button, we're going to temporarily take that down. And we're going to put guidance for distance learning button. And that guidance will include things like a variety of resources for families to access a variety of help, um, that they might need that they never needed before. Um, guidance will also be providing parents with help for study habits, setting up student workspaces. And that will be posted for K through five, six through eight, nine through 12. We're going to have training there for parents to access Google Classroom. And we're also going to have a series of digital citizenship lessons that our librarians are working on developing. Um, we will also have expectations for digital learning for students and expectations for digital learning for parents. Um, we are also, thank you to the administrators. They are working on developing a system of recording and following up for students who are not, um, accessing our modules online and completing work. So we're looking at, uh, trying to monitor those kids. And when a teacher in a Google Classroom is seeing, um, a, a concern or a flag or a lack of engagement, then we're going to be at the ready to follow up with families and see, um, if there's an issue that we can help with, um, if there's some sort of resource that needs to be provided. Guidance at the high school level and middle school will be checking in with every student via email weekly. And our K through five guidance department is also developing their own Google Classroom for students to access in order to, you know, look at various things for wellness and various ways to cope with, um, you know, whatever stressors that are, that are coming into their lives. Um, we are anticipating that parents will call in for absenteeism as usual and we'll be able to remotely pick up those, um, those phone calls and those absenteeism. And, uh, that really kind of gives you a, a good overview of where we are. I'm happy to answer any question. I'm happy to answer any question.
Gail, can you talk about assessment and grading?
Yeah. Yeah, so right now, I think in the sample documents that I shared with you, you can see that there are expectations. By the end of the module, you will be able to do these items. Teachers are responsible for providing feedback against that criteria. Kids will have access to ongoing assessments. And they will be provided feedback from the teachers. Right now, the, there is no guidance on grading. I think it's a huge struggle. I've been reading a lot of the work from California and some of the states that are ahead of us. And no one's quite going into the grading discussion yet of how you.
Can I interrupt for one second? I spoke to you with, yeah, I connected directly with the commissioner today about this and yesterday. And the entire Super Ten Association, CAPS, has sent a list of items that we really would like the state to weigh in on. So there's some commonality and uniformity across the state. Graduation, you know, relaxing of credits that kids needed because they can't get credit and seek time and so forth. Grading was one of them. And it's really exclusively an issue up at the high school level, more than anything. And most districts are struggling with it. So the commissioner did assure me that he has it on his list to provide guidance. He didn't commit, and he's been doing outstanding work of trying to walk a fine line. He didn't commit to wanting to cross over and direct districts what to do. But what he might do is issue some type of best practices around grading when it comes to online learning. The challenge for this is that the inequity with families grows in this kind of model. So the obvious student who gets supported home in a normal school year from mom and dad versus a student who doesn't, there's an inequity. It's built into our system, it's been there for decades. That only grows exponentially now in this type of model. Yeah. So that's one of the big challenges, really. But I do think, you know, we talked about the challenges with college transcripts or high school transcripts for college acceptance. Georgetown, no Georgetown, sorry, MIT, Vanderbilt, and Duke, pretty exclusive colleges, all went to pass fail this last semester. They all went to pass fail. So those applications going there are going to see a, if a system went to a pass fail, are going to see that and say, oh, spring of 2020, oh, that was the global pandemic, of course. You have kids, though, at our school that maybe took an honors bio in the first trimester, second trimester. And maybe that is creating an inequity in the grade point average because kids are on a pass fail in that same course in the spring. So we have some internal inequities and then there are external ones. But it's a challenge, it's a real challenge.
Well, I think add to that the challenge of students who are not used to learning this way. And so it's just a different format, right? It's a whole nother challenge. It's, as you mentioned, teachers are struggling and have major anxiety about it. I can only imagine for students who are not familiar or are better face-to-face that this is going to be challenging for them. And I love that the commissioner has really taken a whole child approach in looking at not just academics, but really the safety and wellbeing of kids.
Leaders emerge in times of crisis. Do we see our best? Do we see our worst? We're seeing our best, they've been phenomenal.
That's great. Moving on.
Anything else for Gail?
Board members?
I have a question. I was just wondering, like, I think a lot of the other districts have started their online learning already. So has there been any collaboration between districts on like what looks like is working, what they're having trouble with? Or what they, what they find is not working?
Can I add a little?
Yeah. Gail, Gail, Gail.
I'm out.
Gail, we wanted to talk.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just from my experience on the ground, Bradford will start Friday. Guilford has gone through two or three iterations. People are a little confused. First, I'm going to work here. So it's just still a flux. Not every district has started yet. And people are just trying to figure it out.
I will say too, before Gail jumps in, I'm on the Cape, the Connecticut Association of Board of Education's listserv for board chairs. And I'm hearing a lot of issues that I've been sending to Tom and Gail about a lot of the things that we were talking about tonight, technology, malfunctions, some, you know, what's non-uniformity between teachers and things like that. So I think a lot of districts are struggling. This is new for everybody. And I, one thing that I have found is that there's nothing the same so far. And I know working in healthcare and finding the same thing.
Yeah. Diane, that's a great question, though, because there are some that dove right in. And we have regional representatives for the CEA, for example, who's worked really closely with us because she's experiencing, say, seven or eight school districts. And maybe half of them have started, half of them haven't. And I think if I had to pick a theme that I've gathered from my colleagues or from the CEA is the false starts, which we really wanted to avoid. So your question is a great one to say, what can we learn from what's worked but hasn't worked? What definitely hasn't worked are the false starts and jumping out. We took this two-week, you know, pre-announced, short-term closure, two weeks, ready to go live on the 30th. And that's one biting off too much, expecting that folks who don't use technology in this way regularly can jump right in. So that's actually informed us in another positive way to say, let's start small. And then let's build up every week. And we can layer on activities, we can layer on possibly more tools. We can look at maybe somewhere after a few weeks, doing a couple of live sessions and adding that. So that's another valuable lesson to your question. I did find an article online that was a teacher who had been teaching English to students in China online for a decade. And her advice was exactly that. Small bites out of the apple in the beginning and get more advanced as you go forward. And I think that's, to your question, that's probably the theme that I'm hearing from some of the districts that have jumped in.
But one of the feedback that I had heard regarding the Guilford district, which, you know, it's only day two, was that last week, the week before they started, the parents are saying they received a lot of emails that were contradictory to each other. They would get one, then they would change. So just looking forward for our district.
That's good advice.
The less emails, the better, the more succinct and the more the same.
Yeah. And we wanted to, that's actually, that is really helpful, by the way. Yeah, as a parent yourself and as parents that I've heard from, we've been trying to do more of a trickle. But the board got blasted with information to keep the board up to date. And we wanted to wait until we have this meeting. And then I think we'll trickle Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then launch on Monday. But I think we all have to operate under the principle that whatever we do is an interim plan. Because we're going to have to revisit what worked and what didn't work. My anxiety with parents the most is their responsibility to their own personal, professional lives, even though their home hasn't changed. So we have to be sensitive to that. Because our five, six, seven-year-olds are not going to log on like our 16, 17-year-olds and say, oh, I got to knock this work off this week. So trying to balance that out. But the false start piece is what you pointed to and contradicting information. That is what keeps me up at night. So I'm glad you pointed that out. Thank you.
I just also want to add on to that, that I think that one of the, one of the very early concerns when, when people were considering what way to design was around equity and access. And that has been a primary concern of mine as we've gone forth across the district. The reason why the templates are the same is not only for parent familiarity, but also for teachers to be able to count on equity across the course or grade level. And also the access in the event that our teachers are ill. So getting ahead in these modules has been something that we're doing this week. So teachers aren't planning for just one week, but they're planning for several weeks across the course before we launch. Because it's highly probable that we're going to have family members ill or we're going to have teachers ill. And because we're working out of our home, that takes everybody, you know, in different directions. So equity and access in our design and also looking forward, instead of launching quickly and not having any continuity or guarantee, ongoing education has been something that we're really mindful of.
I'd like to quote also the commissioner who just got this yesterday. "There's not a timeline around your learning plan." Quote, "In this unprecedented situation, we must think creatively and engage all our best efforts to provide continuing education to our learners." And this is what's key. Consider it an evolving approach. What you provide today could be improved for tomorrow. I mean, we have to be functioning that way because we've never done this before. So week three may look a lot different from week five, from week seven, as we get better at it.
Gail, you brought up something. Tom, you might be able to answer this. And I hope it doesn't happen, but, you know, working in healthcare, it's something I'm mindful of. What about teacher illness? You talked about student attendance. Can you talk a little bit about if your teacher is sick?
I can start with that. I think, Gail talked about the process, but I think we have to expect this is going to happen. And if we don't plan for this, we're going to be very irresponsible. So Gail has been very assertive in saying, these learning modules have to be developed. The pace of them is really stressing teachers out, to be quite honest. Because to develop four, five, six learning modules this week, they want to put their best work out there. Gail, on the other hand, has advocated for the development in advance because when a teacher is out, that module can be picked up by somebody. As opposed to relying on somebody who can't come to work or maybe their family member is sick and they have to care for them. So, you know, that's kind of our urgency to get these learning modules done. But Gail, you might want to speak a little to the process or maybe even Heather, as far as how we're doing attendance and subs and everything?
You know, I certainly will leave it to Heather to talk on the HR end. But the reason, again, the modules look the same and have all the links in them for teachers to use is because we can assume that somebody can take over a class or might be able to do some online learning work to keep that class going. What I'm trying to avoid is when a teacher's out and that stops the learning for a group of kids for a couple of weeks.
Right.
I think the worst part, Gail.
So hanging in in advance is important.
The worst part could be at the high school where you have a singleton elected and that teacher specializes in that and they become ill or a family member does. We're canceled class. I mean, if we don't have the modules developed, no one's been created.
Sure, sure.
So that is something that I think we have to assume that we're going to have a percentage of our workforce that will be sick or a family member is sick. By the way, it's the numbers.
Are we, are the subs becoming involved with the module development in the sense of understanding them as they're being created?
No, so at this, we don't have any subs, so right now.
No, I know we don't have any, but what happens if a teacher becomes ill? Who's going to?
So we have an example from today. We have an example from today where we had a situation at Brown where, being as confident as I can, the principal stepped in and a couple of colleagues stepped in. And I figure out a way to deliver instruction for that teacher next week in week one if it is an illness that requires beyond this week. So I think there's a lot of centralized activity right now, Kirk, where we're doing a lot of command and control to get started with a lot of teacher involvement and administrator involvement. And then I think once we go live, there has to be as much decentralizing as possible so they can problem solve on the ground with a situation like that. Now, they may run into a roadblock and say, we don't have an option. This is a, it's a music teacher, we only have one music teacher. As opposed to with a classroom teacher and her colleagues can step in and help. So every problem would be different, but one uniform solution is probably not ideal, the more decentralized, local kind of building level solution.
Tom, can I add something?
Sure, Greg.
You know, to everyone, and I know the administrator knew this, it's just an example of the teamwork that's going on. Tom, there was a situation in Brown where we knew a colleague, you know, is out of the game here. We know this for this week. We've had multiple people jump in, coaches, Stacy, Gail, and Carol Solin, you know, jumping, you know, jumping around. I got it, I'll do it. And it's just, it's constantly evolving and moving. The teamwork approaches was getting it done. And there's multiple people jumping in. Tom sent one email, I responded to it, but I think as you go back, it's done, don't worry about it. It's all just the teamwork itself.
Just said thank you.
Everyone jumping around.
Yeah, yeah.
That's really.
I did want to also add to that, Kirk, and really point out the amount of professional expertise that's going into these modules. These are people who wrote the curriculum, who are able to make really careful decisions about what the priorities are in the modules and how they're going to go about instructing, knowing the kids in their classroom. And they're also individuals who are on a rapid learning curve themselves with Google Classroom and how to post everything and how to look at student work. So it's not easy for a layperson to come in, such as a substitute that we typically would use at this point in the process. I think that everybody is giving probably 250% of their time to develop these right now, knowing that it will be in the best interest of kids in the system in the long run.
Yeah, Gail, the question was not so much one of having an outside layperson, to use your term, involved in the development of the modules. But once the modules are developed and as we go forward, if a teacher becomes ill, can a substitute step in? Or would we look for a substitute to step in at that point? Or would we look to some other teacher to step in and serve as a substitute?
I think we probably would start with who on the certified staff can step in and help. And then try to problem solve from there. Again, the grade level, the department, the course will go a long way to saying, you got a short bench or you got a deep bench, depending on what they teach. And then the principals would go from there. We're good at support and our program coordinators and our instructional coaches who can keep things afloat from a planning perspective. But I think the course and the grade level will go a long way in determining that.
Thank you, Gail.
I have a question regarding the courses that are going to be taught. You mentioned the related arts. And as an example, one of the modules for the younger grades was Spanish. So for, you know, the middle school grades, what related arts would still be taught? Like, I know there's still health that needs to, like, be taken. And some people were taking a computer class. I would assume things like, you know, art, they're not going to have. But, you know, which ones would they have?
Actually, we're trying to help all of them. We're trying to make sure that kids have access to the things that we have had access to all year. I would say the exception to that is that Poulson with some of the elective being a lesser priority than some of the more guaranteed typical elective in terms of related arts. So we are developing across the board. We want to be really sensitive to the fact that some kids come to school for those electives. And some kids really thrive in picking up an instrument and using that instrument during times of stress and developing their skills. So we want kids to be able to gravitate and feel a degree of success. And if they can, joy in learning across the board. I do feel that, you know, we've also got to be realistic about how much time can be dedicated to online distance learning and school. So, you know, our efforts in the beginning are to make sure that we're providing everything equally. But I do think that as we grow and as we hear from parents, we can make an adjustment along the way as to where time should be spent. But right now, we're developing so kids can learn everything that they were learning before they left.
And Diane, for what it's worth, I got an email yesterday from my sons, or my son got an email from his theater teacher. So we are going to try to do every subject we possibly can.
Any other board member questions?
Yeah, Katie, can you hear me okay?
I can. Hi, Tom.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, Gail, thank you for this. This is a professional development question, more generally for the population. Has there been any thought given to trying to build in one or more professional development days into the upcoming calendar so that as we're going through the upcoming weeks, if the teachers in general across the board need to take a pause, that we'll have that opportunity to kind of just hit a timeout on the classes and get to some of the frequently asked questions? I mean, at my school, we're ending week two of being online. And it just so happens that Friday was a professional development day to begin with. And even some of my best teachers who have been doing this for a while are, they're considering a blessing that they've. they're considering a blessing that they've got this upcoming Friday because they said, "Even though we thought we knew how to do this, a lot of questions came up. There's a learning curve for even the best of us." And I think globally, they would really appreciate having that day off. Has there been any thought to trying to build some pauses into the calendar?
Yeah, so, uh, Tom, that was exactly the conversation yesterday and today. Um, what we discussed was, we're going to present a calendar to the board, regardless of the governor's next move, with consideration for April vacation. Um, there's a, you know, a growing consensus that we're all going to need a break at some point. I think everyone's going to be exhausted. I think teachers, I think parents, I think kids are going to be absolutely exhausted. Uh, so we're going to be able to break in, but within that, we also talked about, we can keep an online student program going, and I'll just pick on Wednesday. We can say every other Wednesday, or every third Wednesday, students will be online, but you do not have access to teachers that day. Teachers have a breather to work with their colleagues, to problem solve, and to work through exactly what you're talking about. Um, that's a tremendous idea. Uh, Gail brought it up first, and then we kind of grew from there. We talked about maybe a couple hours, a half day. But to really do it justice, if we maintain the student side, you know, they can pace their work out, but the teachers are offline that day, um, and they're working together, that breather is going to be critical.
That's good, that's good. Because it's got to work with them first, they need the most support, even more so than the students in some respects.
Yeah. And I just saw a note that Glastonbury is doing a half day on every Wednesday. So, maybe a full day every other Wednesday is something we could think about, or, you know, we could talk about different models.
So, well, there'll be more to come on that next week. Tom, we're going to try and do a special meeting to, um, you know, re-adopt the calendar.
Thanks. I assumed it might be part of the calendar question. I just didn't want to miss the opportunity with Gail talking about this, so thank you.
Great question. Have a question?
Any other questions from board members or comments or anything else?
I have a general comment that I'd like to make if all questions are exhausted.
I think they are. Go on.
Thanks. Uh, this is a general comment about the rollout of remote learning and this community update on COVID-19. Uh, tomorrow, across the state and the nation, as we all live under the COVID-19 emergency, students will be waking up and engaging in formal remote learning with their teachers. Uh, formal remote learning will occur tomorrow in towns and cities across Connecticut, but this does not include students in Madison. There are 20 other towns and regions in our district reference group or area. Of those 20 towns, 18 will be engaging students tomorrow morning in formal remote learning. Madison will not. Some of these towns have been up and running with remote learning for over a week. In Madison, we're still waiting. Of our 11 closest neighbors, nine have formal remote learning up and running. That means that tomorrow, teachers will be formally engaging students in learning in Clinton, Guilford, North Branford, Old Saybrook, Region 17 HK, Region 18 Lionel Lime, Region 4 Chester, Deep River Essex, Wallenford, and Westford. But, teachers won't be in Madison. In Madison, remote learning is delayed until March 30th. Until board members push back, the initial announcement from Superintendent Grease indicated that remote learning might not begin until April 6th, three weeks after the start of remote learning in some of the earliest adopting towns that I've mentioned. In a time of crisis, normal routines are important for students. At all times, it's important to minimize interruptions in student learning and maximize connections with students. Superintendent Grease's delayed approach to remote learning is a disappointment. And to be clear, I believe this is an administrative issue, a leadership issue, and is unrelated to the hard work being put in by our school building level leadership, teachers, and other educators. You've heard from Superintendent Grease tonight that we should not measure success based on who is the first to adopt remote learning. Perhaps, but as a parent, as a board member, I'm tired of Madison education coming in last. I believe this is another in a series of educational errors made by this administration.
So, Greg, I could not disagree more. Um, I'm sorry that you had to take this opportunity in a moment, as you mentioned, of crisis, um, to do this. I think parents are looking to the Board of Education and our school district um, for guidance and reassurance. And, um, working in healthcare as I do, um, and seeing the work here where the teachers, the administrators, um, are locking arms in the midst of this crisis and making something really beautiful out of something that nobody ever intended. Um, it is really unfortunate to me that a board member would use this as an opportunity to point out, um, their own opinions about something. Um, it's not how I'm used to this board behaving, but nonetheless, this is where we are. I am happy that, um, this was done in 11 days with no prior planning. It's a testament to the dedication of our administrators, our support staff, and our teachers. Um, as parents, we know that our children miss their teachers. What I've seen over these past 10 days is that our teachers miss our students. Um, this town has clearly, and town at the helm, has clearly communicated through this process to the board and the community, setting appropriate expectations, but most importantly, being a calming and compassionate leader, and I'm grateful. Um, it's better to have a well-thought-out plan than, that is successful than something rushed by an arbitrary deadline. It also gives parents time to plan for this new normal um, that will become their new daily routine. I have looked into the towns that are, um, have already started distance learning. Um, we are not the first, I'll be the first to admit. We are also not the last. Um, but I have a very strong feeling that we're going to be the best. So, again, I think it's very unfortunate that you cast a shadow on a night full of, um, collaboration and support. Um, but, um, that's where we are, and that's all I'm going to say about it. Anybody else have any comments?
Greg, I'd like to say I think it was ready, fire, aim, I disagree with the facts. So, that's, I, I think we're, um, a few days into a very fluid situation, and if you look at the, some of the other district websites, Darian, some top-notch schools, you'll see that our website and our distance learning is going to be far superior. I'd also like to emphasize that it's not a competition. The question here is, how do we best serve our students and parents in our district? And I think tonight is good testimonial for that.
I have a quick question. I know that, um, there was time given for students to go get instruments that were left in their lockers at some of the different schools. Um, but I was wondering, you know, if they're picking up, learning pretty much where they stopped. I don't know that all the students brought all of their notebooks and work home from school, and they might need it to reference to get back to where they were. And so, I don't know if there was something in place for the students to be able to go and get their things from their lockers.
That's a great question, Diane. You know what, actually, this would be a good opportunity to pivot to feedback from the building administrators. Um, so I'm sure one of them could probably answer at least some plans to do that. Uh, but they, rather than have all five, or six, or seven of them speak, I know they had named, if one or two of them got to get some feedback from the building level, um, because they're working with the ground level at the teacher level, and maybe they can answer that question as well, Diane. Um, so, admin team, was there someone dubbed to kind of speak on behalf of the group?
If you don't mind, I'd like to chime in. This is Catherine, and anybody can follow me, um, for sure. And yes, I'm working on a case-by-case basis. I'm getting emails every day, multiple emails throughout the day. And honestly, I'm addressing everything as it comes on a case-by-case basis. I've let students come and get lots of things from their lockers. I've got things from their lockers, I put them in the bins that Gail referred to outside. I've worked with our, um, to make sure that everybody's got the notebooks that they need. Everything's labeled, Martha and I have a very good system in place, and I know that for cases in every building. But I think the last few weeks have been unique. You know, I've been in education for 24 years, and nothing that's quite like this. Um, as educators, we've been, all been challenged to think in new ways, to learn new things at a lightning speed. And it's something we take pride within ourselves as to be lifelong learners and to be in a profession that we pride ourselves on growth. And, you know, I can speak for several administrators that I know that we've spent hours looking at the curriculum modules that staff have created, making sure that all the students have what they need, making sure there's consistency across buildings. There's not a day that goes by that I'm not in touch with Central Office of Administrators or my colleagues in each of the boards. Um, the guidance from the levels of Central Office.
Well, the wood new-
Their communication would be too late.
Catherine-
Catherine, can you shoot that?
Catherine, can you, uh, repeat that?
Turn off the vacuum.
Is somebody vacuuming?
Not me, Scott.
Not me. Can everybody hear me okay?
Now we can.
Okay. I just moved the computer close to me, that might be better. Um, but I think to continue where I left off, the, we spent hours looking at curriculum that staff has created, but that ongoing collaboration with Central Office has been absolutely incredible. There's not a day that goes by that there's not that communication of, "What do you think? How's it going? What's working? What isn't working? What are the questions?" Staff are, um, and the words from staff are, "I'm working harder than I've ever worked because it's a completely different type of work than what we used to." Um, but I think just personally, I'd like to thank Tom, I'd like to thank Gail, and the entire Central Office team. Because without their vision of where to go and how to do it, we wouldn't be where we even are today compared to a week ago. The coaches, the coordinators, and the teachers have just done incredible work under our direction, but without that direction, they wouldn't be floundering right now, and they're not. So, I think that's really important for us to recognize, to acknowledge, to make the rollout next week as soon as possible. I don't think it'll be too much. I don't know what that is, but, um, I don't think it'll be too much. It's just possible to be the same staff that we are. Um, and I appreciate that support that I know I'm receiving, but then also that I'm then dispersing and passing on to my staff, um, so that everybody can be successful. I mean, I've been listening to all the conversations that I can add to, whether you're taking out lunches, or textbooks, or subs, or the work that custodians are doing, special ed. I think it goes on and on and on.
We can't hear a thing.
Sorry.
Somebody needs to go on mute, or stop making margaritas.
Frank's on mute.
Is there anything that you would like to add on to everybody, but I just want to make sure that everybody has a chance to be heard?
I'll just say that I'm really proud of the team we're on. Um, I'm familiar with our neighboring districts. Uh, work with a lot of people, talk with a lot of people, and I just look at it as a marathon, not a sprint. And, um, like I said, proud of the team we're on. I think we're responding to teachers, um, who really are on that front line of getting things ready. And we continue to meet and adjust, adapt, grab. And we're meeting tomorrow morning, Tom called, simply because of teacher feedback we got over the last, you know, 12 hours. So, we're going to meet, and we're going to adjust, and we're going to keep people comfortable. Um, we miss the kids, you know, I'm at Brown every day. The teachers who stop in, they miss the kids. We're in people business. This is uncharted territory. Uh, we miss each other. Uh, we miss, and we miss the parents we work with. Um, but I'll say that I'm proud of the team we're on. So, as a photo, we're going to be on Monday. Um, like I said, it's a marathon, not a sprint.
That same thought, as Frank, it's just that, um, I can't think of a better team that I'd want to be a part of, and a better district that I'd want to be a part of. Um, as a parent in another district, one that was just referenced this evening, um, everything looks great sometimes on paper. Um, but everybody is experiencing hiccups along the way. Um, and the best laid plans don't always go as according to what is written on a document. Uh, we have to be very mindful of that. This is a surreal time. We have learned nothing according to this, um, in any of our, um, education. So, we're in this together, we're a strong team. And looking at the teachers today and sitting and being a part of their planning and discussion, our children and our parents are in great hands because of the leadership that we have at Central Office and the colleagues that we have amongst us. And I know that our parents and our children are in great hands. And the parents who I've met with today, 40 of them, to be frank, can't thank us enough. And that's a very small population if you look at the entire Madison Public School District, but I think it speaks to how appreciative our parents are of the work that is being prepared for our children in a very surreal time, truly. So, um, thank you to everybody who's been doing what's best for our children in this unprecedented time.
Um, I think we have to answer Diane's question still about how can students access. Um, but I also think there's a button up that part of it. I don't really know what advantage it would be just to rush five days ahead. I just don't think there is one. I think that we have a great plan, and to have five days just rushed in last week, it just doesn't seem advantageous, so, um, but, yeah.
Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
I, I think the standardized template, the module, is absolutely tremendous to be able to have criteria, feedback, and resources available in one form, and be able to pick up from where a student left at unit F, or unit D, or whatever. Uh, and to link back to that is, is really the best thing for students' education. And it's, as far as I can tell, unique. I've looked at several districts in our DIRG, you know, several of our DIRG, and they all did great jobs, but nothing is that tightly integrated and will provide the continuity of education that our kids will receive. And I think, again, to pick up Frank's metaphor, you don't win a marathon in the first 100 yards. In fact, you're going to go into lactic acid, you're going to, you're going to die the last six miles. So, this is, you know, let's be patient and trust the process and, you know, and trust your eyes with what you're seeing.
So, maybe we can pivot to something more productive.
Yeah, I was just going to say-
So, what I like to do is have the administrators, we're meeting tomorrow. Diane, you know what, we meet tomorrow at 9:30. Um, maybe we can include in the parent notification, uh, a consistent process, or at least a building level one, uh, to answer your question about accessing any materials they may need to access in the school building. Um, I appreciate the question, though.
Um, and I think I, it's important to me that we, um, get to Dr. Liz Metaglia. I think one of the many, 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 many challenges in developing this plan was, was creating, um, something for special education students. And so, if it's okay with you, Tom, I think it'd be great to get, um, some works from Liz.
You're all listening.
Thanks. Thank you. Um, I did have more to say due to the time. I have kind of cut some of the smaller things out, but there's been a lot of things that have been done. I'm going to focus on some of the bigger items and things that be tackled. Um, in terms of collaboration with others, I've been collaborating with others in the Learn District. I'm also a part of the DIRG Directors Chain, as well as local and national webinars on the COVID-19 crisis. One thing that they've brought up in terms of special ed services is that we really need to make our best effort to enable a child to make progress appropriate in light of the circumstances. Obviously, we have very unique circumstances, and we are not able to provide the exact same services in distance learning. However, we do have a lot of wonderful services that we will be putting together. And just as Tom said earlier, starting small and becoming more robust as our students and our staff are using these tools. So, one of the things that I have drafted and will be reviewed tomorrow with my attorney is a draft special ed distance learning plan at every level.
I have every level, expectations for the special education teachers, related services, what phase looks like, what our PAL program looks like. I have collaborated and spoken with EFS and what that will look like. So one of the things that some of the other plans that have been out there, they haven't been vetted yet by the attorney. So we're taking the time in order to make sure that we are providing what's good for kids and also getting it checked by legal counsel as well. We've been working a lot with our staff in professional development, especially at all different levels as they're learning all of these new tools, as Gail pointed out earlier. One of the other things that I thought was really important is, you know, as we have all this social distancing, we have a lot of social isolation for some of our students who don't communicate to others as much. So really, my message to staff has been to communicate, communicate, communicate. This week, every single special education case manager is putting together some individualized activities and will be reaching out to families. So if you haven't received it yet, you will be receiving something very soon. At the preschool level, we know that we don't want students at the preschool level on any type of device all the time. So we've worked with the staff, and we've put together modules for the students to have that are done per week. So my staff has finished them up today. They will be going out in the mail tomorrow, and they'll be going home. The other important thing that I wanted to make sure that we had in place is what are those distance learning tools that our students can utilize? So some tools, such as IXL Math and Language Arts, we've already been using on a smaller scale in LCPA, but expanding the access and also putting together training for students, staff, as well as parents to know how to utilize these. Then in thinking of our most median population, the students who need our functional life skills or in our phase program, I purchased a unique curriculum, which we've used parts of it before. But this way, in order to continue to provide them with those important life skills and functional games where they can learn from that they need, this program is used by a lot of different other places, such as ASIN. The other thing, I was very concerned about my outplacement students. So even though I'm receiving distance learning plans from each of the schools, wherever any of these programs that we're purchasing for students in-house, I believe are appropriate for my outplacement students, we are also providing them with access as well. The other, we have our PAL program, our Program of Alternative Learning. Through the NY2, which has that unique curriculum I just spoke about for our life skill students, they also have a positive positivity program for self-regulation. So again, to supplement the education, they will be receiving, give them this online platform that the teacher can help to adjust the lessons, interact with them, and then it also has data collection through that program. I've been working with my staff at all levels. We've had many Zooms from this past weekend to pretty much every day this week, looking at setting up what teacher expectations are at each different level. For special education, we individualize instruction. But let's see someone with this profile. How can we kind of have some consistency for what the expectations are, but then individualize about what the student needs in light of their current circumstances? We also developed a weekly plan that we can send home to families for students that would include their recommendations for any online programs that I just brought up, and also talking about any type of live or webinar as well. A big thing that has kind of come out from the state and national is less about compliance and more about coherence and making sure that we really think about what a student needs in this distant learning model, which may be different than what they needed in a traditional model. Some students may need more, and some students may need less as they're able to easily access things using the Google Suite. I've also been working with our interventionists. We have drafted up a tiered intervention plan across the district. So that way, just like in the SRBI model that we have, putting together a distance learning one for Language Arts and Math. And so that has been drafted and will be reviewed with Gail. We're also working, many teachers don't have general education teachers, may not have access to IEPs. So we're ensuring that all the general education staff have access to IEPs and 504 plans remotely. I have to say, my staff has been absolutely amazing. We are learning lots of new programs. We are getting a lot of information and getting different constantly. And yet my staff, even though I say something one day, and then it's different the next day, they continue to keep coming up with great ideas and innovate ways in order to meet the needs of all my kids. As I said, we're going to start small, like Tom was saying earlier, and then we will continue to build a robust program as we move forward.
Thanks, Lizzy.
You're welcome. Any board member questions? For special ed, I'm just. So Liz, can I just ask a question about IEPs? And if parents have IEPs or if they're in the middle of testing, what can they expect?
So at this time,